All right, why don't we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, equal and visible with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary Mathias, call the roll.
Okay.
I'm hoping.
Did he become a doctor?
Dr. Ross?
Dr. Ross, hey!
Everybody gets their chances, it's Dr. Ross.
I guess he became a doctor. Mr. Ross.
That's why the rest of us got it.
I want one. Ms. Shatki?
Present.
Ms. Slade, not here. Dr. Phelps?
Ms. Slade is not here.
Okay, you're right.
Dr. Valvus, present.
Okay. Dr. Flores?
Here.
Dr. Mathias, here. Pastor Moody?
Present.
Dr. Randalls?
Present.
President Baker?
Here.
Okay.
All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Well, we are here on a special night and we're normally not here on the fourth Monday, but here we are. And it looks like a light agenda in front of us, just the budget and contracts and stuff. So, anyone here for public comment?
I don't have any here.
All right. And we have no celebrations. Secretary's report.
Wow. It's hard to believe that on November 8, 2016, we're going to have a general election. There's going to be four open seats on the Grand Rapids School Board with four-year terms starting January 1, 2017, through December 31, 2020. If you're interested in running for a seat on the school board, please be aware of the following criteria: Must be a U.S. citizen, must be a registered voter, must be a resident of the Grand Rapids Public Schools District's boundaries, and if you want to file, the location is Grand Rapids City Clerk's office, 300 Monroe Avenue Northwest. And then the filing requirements and affidavit of identity is required, petitions containing sufficient signatures, or non-refundable filing fee of $100. Petition signature requirements are based on the population of the school district and must be registered electors of the school district. The filing deadline must be made in the office of the city clerk's office by 4:00 p.m. on Tuesday, July 26, 2016.
And that's it? All right, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Sorry.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Sorry, Dr. Baker. Dr. Baker, members of the board, I'd like to ask Larry Obers to come forward to review the budget and ask your support.
Good evening, Dr. Baker. I said good morning. And Superintendent Wetherall, Neil, members of the board, good evening. And we are here to hopefully get your approval on the operating budget, the special revenue budget, the debt retirement fund budget. We went over this with the operating budget with the Finance Committee this morning, got their approval on the revised budget. Both the special revenue and debt retirement fund budgets are unchanged from what was brought to you earlier this month. So, I believe that, let me just summarize what happened between the June 6 board meeting and tonight at your direction. We did adjust revenue, reduced it by $3 million to reflect an updated enrollment. And I believe it was sent to you a summary of fund balance and what those particular adjustments were. Looks like this. Hopefully everyone got a copy of that.
It's green, we have it.
And let me just talk for a minute from that particular schedule, so it lays out in the summary form what went on here. If you look at the bottom, you'll see what the changes, this updated budget. We projected an enrollment for the updated budget of $16,705. And that's made up of our blended count for the year we're in, the 15-16 blended count of 16,680. That was that audited number we just got, just prior to the last board meeting. And we bet a 25 to that with the belief that we can, in fact, bring more students into the district over what we had this year. So, that's related to the fact that the Section 25E, which was the rules surrounding transfer of students between the fall and spring count date. We lost 33 students, FTEs, this year because of that. That particular section of the School Aid Act was repealed. It's out of there for 1617. So, that alone hopefully will bring in some additional students that we lost in the current year. So, that 16,705 projected number resulted in a reduction of state aid revenue of about $3 million from what was presented in the original budget back on June 6. And that reduced our fund balance just over 2%. And I think we talked about that on June 6. And the other adjustment to the budget related to later that evening, you, as a board, approved to increase the health insurance hard cap for all employee groups up to the 1617 statutory limits. You had previously approved a hard cap up to the 1516 limits. And so, increasing it to the 1617 limits added an additional $415,000 to the expense side. There were no other adjustments in the expense side, as I communicated to you in that first board meeting on June 6. We had pretty much settled on what we thought our expenditures were going to be for fiscal year 1617. So, all total, the fund balance reduction from the original budget presented to you three weeks ago in tonight's budget, for the general fund, a reduction of fund balance of 3.4 million approximately reduces it 2.36%. Just above that, you can see the summary of what that does to fund balance. I've presented to you the first column where we came out, June 30 of last year, what our projection is through Amendment 2 of this year, 8.73%. The original 1617 budget had a fund balance of 8.51%. And the current fund balance, if you approve this budget, will be down to 6.15%. Couple of things I want to say. The fund balance computation was based on the state's early warning criteria, which I think is a key component. And secondly, I think back in one of our work sessions, or closed sessions, maybe back in March or February, we talked about trying to stay above the 6% fund balance criteria, which we've done here, even with the $3.4 million reduction, just over 6%, 6.15%. So, that is the only changes between what was presented to you on June 6 and what we have now. And I'll answer any questions anyone might have at this point.
The state's early warning computation, that excludes grant funding as a overall...
Correct. It's total fund balance divided by unrestricted funds, yeah. Which is, as I said before, it's most advantageous to us, thank God. So, yep.
Yeah, so I just want to reiterate that. The other thing that was changed is that we did increase from our offer to include the 1617, which added $415,000 to...
And that, yeah. And that sealed the deal with the union negotiations. And they're very appreciative that the board increased that. And, yeah. So, that total cost, just to add to Dr. Baker's comment, was about $2.7 million to go from the current hard cap we've had in place for a few years up to what will now be the new hard cap on July 1. And it will, and all union groups, we've had several, you'll approve their contracts later tonight, that the other couple that aren't, we have letters of agreement. So, the impact of that increased hard cap, we'll see the benefit of that on July 1. All groups will. All employees actually will, so, which is great. So...
And we can celebrate that portion in a few minutes.
We can celebrate that, absolutely.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Good job.
Absolutely. So, any other questions? We do need three separate resolutions, three separate resolutions that need to be passed by this body tonight. One for the general operating fund for 1617, one for the special revenue fund for 1617, and one for the debt retirement fund for 1617.
Motion to approve the general operating fund.
Support.
Okay. So, we're moving into that. Okay. I do want to, I did want to say before, and I do appreciate that you went back and redid all this stuff to help us have clarity. So, I appreciate it. So, we had a motion, and Dr. Randalls seconded it.
Motion seconded by Dr. Randalls. Any discussion? All right. Call the roll. Okay, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade is not here. Dr. Phelps?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
No.
Dr. Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I get a motion?
Motion for approval of the special revenue fund? Support.
Any discussion?
Do just have one small question. I noticed the proposed budget for 1617, Houseman Field is $123,000. I noticed there's an increase from the fiscal year 2015, which was $87,000. So, just about a $36,000 increase over the past two years. I'm just kind of curious.
Eight thousand, seven thousand.
Yeah, seven from last year, yeah. Thirty-six from two years ago. I'm just wondering what that might be.
Yeah. I saw that email from you late, so I apologize. My, I don't know, my, I don't know, Rhonda, but my, I suspect...
Come down.
Last year and this year, significantly more use. The Grand Rapids Football Club is now using that facility for their games, six, seven games. So, operating costs have gone up, even though we charge them a lease, the costs still show up on, so I'm guessing that's a big chunk of it, Rhonda, right?
Primarily is the outside events that we're holding there. So, on the revenue side, we're also increasing on that. Covering the expenses is we're, actually this year, 1516 is a very good year at Houseman. And they're having a very good summer this year.
Absolutely, we are.
So, hopefully, we're, 1617 will continue with that.
Okay, it just got my attention. I mean, I've seen 36,000 over two years seem kind of significant. And I'm just more curious than anything. All right.
Thanks, Rhonda.
Any other discussion?
Okay, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade is not here. Dr. Phelps?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
Passed.
And a motion for the debt retirement fund.
So moved.
Support.
Any discussion?
No discussion. All right. I was just waiting for it.
Okay, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade is not here. Dr. Phelps?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
All passed.
Moving now to some other Finance Committee items. Purchasing agenda, can I get a motion to approve?
Move for approval of the purchasing agenda?
Support.
Discussion?
Dr. Baker, let me just clarify, because it's separately identified, we have purchasing agenda with the blanket orders. Actually, the blanket orders, there is a detailed schedule that, that's really covered. It's also part of the purchasing agenda, if you look under Section B, Item 10. So, we don't need a separate motion on the blanket orders, because they are incorporated within the purchasing agenda.
Okay, let me rephrase the motion. So, can I get a motion for the purchasing agenda including the blanket orders?
There you go, thank you.
I need to amend my motion then.
Okay, thank you.
Like to amend my motion to include the blanket orders.
We're all parliamentarians tonight, aren't we? Call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade is excused. Dr. Phelps?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
No.
Dr. Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
Passed.
All right, can I get a motion for the donation?
So moved?
Support.
Discussion? Nope.
Okay.
Do we know still how it happened?
Pardon me?
How they did it? Kenosha Elementary, did we get that? The data?
The question, how we won that, the donation.
Kenosha.
The Grifters, Kenosha, the media center redo?
I don't have a whole lot of detail. I know that the principal had applied for it, and they just, and, yeah, they got selected. So, now we're going to get a media center makeover, including some renovations to the duck compound.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, cute.
It's going to be the literacy, outdoor literacy center with duck hatch links.
Make a good joke about...
That's right.
About meeting consultants and quacking, but anyway.
Okay. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade is not here. Dr. Phelps?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
All passed.
Next on our action item is the museum, school, high school parking lot memo of agreement?
Move for approval of the memo of agreement?
Support.
Any discussion on that? Questions?
I did want to reiterate what we talked about this morning in terms of the green space use and how it's important we're trading a parking lot in a green space and, you know, that we need to be aware of that, and also that the use of the Briggs Park for, use for GRPS, if we can have that as a priority too. There are quite a few things that happen at that park as we go forward, but I just wanted to bring that up again as a...
Sure. I will just add just a bit more to that. What's before you do is just simply the purchase of the parking lot. We have been in discussion, and I know there's language that's included in there, of looking at Briggs Park as a potential that when, in the different transactions, it could obviously reduce our overall purchase. But in this case, we're buying it at fair market value. We have the potential to sell Briggs at fair market value, but we're still working with the city on that. Not a guarantee.
Right, right. And, yeah, that's a big priority for a lot of educational areas.
It's been great, I got to say, we've been working with the city. They have been absolutely awesome to work with. Every step of the way, on 54 Jefferson, they saw the need with the parking, there was an opportunity for us to get it. And, yeah, it's just been a really good partnership. And there, we have potential to continue that with Briggs.
So, we are, to be clear, we're voting now on purchasing the parking lot.
Correct.
And we will be asked later to consider, perhaps...
Potentially, if the city decides that's what they want.
Or if we fundraise adequately, that we wouldn't even need to then give up. Briggs Park would be another option. I'm just throwing that out there, this is the discussion. I don't know, I'm not trying to tie anyone's hands, but there is the issue of we are fundraising for the public museum from private dollars. And Mr. Obers had brought that up.
Correct.
Not that that was, yeah, but I'm adding.
I don't know, I'm just curious, you had that, and I hadn't thought about it prior, but would you surmise there would be some preference to hold Briggs as opposed to selling it? I'm just curious what you're thinking.
Currently, GRPS uses it significantly. The city banned practices over there. There's some gym classes that take place over there. There are soccer. And Mr. Clonperrance had brought up various uses, and Mr. Baker, Dr. Baker. So, it sounds like we would sort of use it quite a bit. And, you know, would we lose some of that first priority if it wasn't our space any longer?
Yeah.
I'm just advocating that we need to really make sure that all of these...
When we talk with the city, we would be part of our joint use agreement, we would get priority use over the, but we'd have to define what that is. And so, that's one of the reasons why we didn't move quicker. We need to spend more time identifying all the different uses.
Right.
We need to have the city understand what part they...
Critical, identifying all of the uses.
Because if the track, that was one of the questions the cities posed back, the track, do we really need use of the track? Could they take the track out? You know, there's a lot of other questions, because we do use the property and would still need to use the property. So, we have a little more discussion to have.
Sure. Upset Baron parents aren't...
Okay. But I just want for the record that we are not trying to sell Briggs. So, I don't want any other buyers to come up and say, "We're trying to sell property." We have not listed the property for sale.
Air it out.
Okay. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatki?
Yes.
Slade is excused. Dr. Phelps?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
Passed.
All right. Motion for the Warm, Safe, and Dry Project. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Discussion? All right, call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatki?
Yes.
Slade is excused. Dr. Phelps?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
Couldn't you do these one at a time, or...
No, we can do them together, but Mickey is prepared to answer any questions if you like. Mickey, come forward.
So, yeah, before we call this to vote, could you just let us know what we're looking at here?
Absolutely. Dr. Baker, Superintendent Neil, members of the board, in front of you is the resolution to approve and ratify contracts for GREA, GREOP, GREOA, GRPSPA, and GREOA, I think I said them all, Grayson. All of the groups have TAs, so they have tenatively agreed. And the groups before you have ratified their contracts. So, this is the evening that we are asking you to approve those contracts, so we can put those into place. The summary sheets you have in front of you just summarize the changes that were made to those agreements, including the hard cap increase and student enrollment incentives for those groups that chose to accept that.
Okay.
This is really nice that we got this done.
Awesome.
So, it's... All right. So, we are voting for them in one package?
The resolution includes all of the groups listed on this.
So, can I get a motion to support the contract ratification?
So moved.
Support.
All right.
Okay. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatki?
Yes.
Ms. Slade is excused. Dr. Phelps?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
So moved.
All right. Thank you. Appointment to the Grand Rapids Child Discovery Center Board of Directors.
Move for approval. That dude's impressive. Support.
No discussion? All right. Is your hand getting tired?
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatki?
Yes.
Slade is excused. Dr. Phelps?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
So moved.
All right, now the consent agenda grouping.
Move for approval of the consent agenda? Support.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shatki?
Yes.
Slade is excused. Dr. Phelps?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Dr. Mathias, yes. Pastor Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Randalls?
Yes.
President Baker?
Yes.
So moved.
All right, we have a discussion item of the board retreat reschedule, so... We had lots of people have problems come their way a couple of weeks ago. We have July 11th on our calendar as a retreat date. Is that correct for the third retreat date? I'm going to suggest a change, but...
Yeah, we have 4/30 set.
Okay. We know that at least one of us won't be here for that date. The superintendent I met with facilitator from MASB that was here two weeks ago to do the retreat, we had to cancel the meeting late. So, we had a long meeting. And I think that given the things that we want to accomplish, I'd like to propose that we consider, rather than doing two more retreat dates, July 11th, and then another one to make up for the one that we missed two weeks ago, that I'd like to see what you guys think about. Rather than doing that, we do, say, a longer retreat timeframe in August, and not do the July 11th date. But I just want to get what you guys have thought. So, we have two remaining agenda items for the board retreat. One would be the kind of refresher course, but the, and Dr. Phelps would be interested in this, Mary Kerwin is going to bring in a calendar, a calendaring tool that we can work with and consider, and that calendaring tool. She also, there's going to be a lot of changes next year for what's expected of superintendent evaluation. And actually, beginning next year, all board members will be expected to be trained in doing a superintendent evaluation based on some new expectations. So, she is planning to use that as a way to orient us to the kind of 101 work that we have to do as board members. The second piece that we wanted to include, both of these would be three-hour or so sessions, would be to talk about the racial diversity of the district, including the increasing number of international refugee students, and really how the district is responding to... and really how the district is responding to these increased groups and how the board should be aware of the increasing expectations and needs of our district. So, that would be another three hour block. So, I'm proposing that we consider a six hour block for a retreat that would be more traditional to the way we've done it in the past. Or I'm open to suggestions about the way you all think that we should do it.
Are you suggesting that for the eighth?
Well, I am suggesting that we have one six hour retreat rather than two three hour retreats, but I'm open to discussion. The eighth would work for me.
You're saying August 8? Is that correct?
Correct.
That's what, yeah, that's a, we currently have it.
Right.
At 4:30.
I'm not available the August 8.
I'm not either.
I'll be out of town still.
Are there?
Yeah, so will I.
Okay, so the eighth is not possible. Is the 22nd of August, that's right before, is that too close to school year starting? How are people on August 22nd?
It's our Finance Committee meeting date.
Well, then we can start that. I mean, we can start the, I mean, it only took like 37 minutes this morning. I think we could.
We were there like an hour and 40 minutes the time before, so.
Okay.
We really try and.
We could start at 10, just give you guys a couple hours, just in case.
Oh, yeah, it's fine. We can just roll right through. Start, we can have our Finance Committee at nine and then meet right after, so people don't have to show up at eight if.
Is the retreat going to be held here or are we going out to the school?
GRPS University.
Can discuss where. I would probably work with the staff, but we probably would not have it here. GRPS University or somewhere else, get some nice food.
So, that works for me. I'm available.
Does it not work for anyone? August 22nd?
And it's going to be a pretty packed agenda.
Yeah, it'll be those two topics. It'll be a full day.
Mr. Ross, are you available?
Do you, you'll make it?
Yeah, I can, I can make it.
Probably Ms. Slade. I can't really speak for her, but we have our meeting, so I'm sure she would be around or.
Well, let's plan on it.
10:00 AM?
Should we make it 10 o'clock start? After the Finance Committee?
Yeah. If we can, I guess we could have finance here still, so we have the cameras.
Well, let's.
And then go over there.
To four, 10 to four?
Yeah, let's go ahead and tentatively, that would be six hours, right?
Well, we would need, we're going to, like, working lunch.
How about if we pencil in 10 to five and try to get done by four?
Or we could do nine to four.
Nine, that would work.
I mean, if we do our meeting still here.
At eight.
And then just go over and an August Finance Committee usually isn't that, pick up a budget issue.
All right. We will check. We will begin ordering and reserving. Thanks. Public comment?
We do have one.
Yvonne Pierre.
Here.
Welcome. You have three minutes.
Three minutes, okay.
Good evening, Superintendent Neal and board members. My name is Yvonne Pierre, and I'm here to advocate for my neighborhood, which includes the Grand Rapids Public School University campus. My neighbors and I are concerned that your, that the district's decision to remove more than two acres of green space on the north side of the school for the purpose of constructing a parking lot has been detrimental to our neighborhood. We believe that your plan has negatively affected the aesthetics of the area and has also created a safety hazard for the residents. First of all, I think we can all agree that green space is quickly disappearing in most urban areas, yet you've removed more than two acres of green space and have replaced the grass with asphalt and the trees with parking lot lights. This was the only green space on the north side of the school building. I think we can agree that preserving such spaces should be a part of building healthy, vibrant communities. Secondly, the plan to have vehicles exiting onto Sweet Street is unacceptable. Even a managed release of, a managed release of cars will result in hundreds of vehicles, possibly hundreds of vehicles, exiting into the residential area if the parking lot is filled to capacity. We believe that hundreds of cars exiting into the neighborhood would create a safety hazard and would change the character of the area. At our last neighborhood meeting, a resident said that it might be more acceptable to have traffic travel up Sweet Street to Ball instead of turning onto the other streets in the area. However, that's really not a feasible plan or a reasonable solution. Sweet Street is part of the residential area and is, and this proposal does not decrease the concern regarding safety and the volume of vehicles traveling through the residential area. Furthermore, the exit, the existing exit on the west side of the school is a juncture, is at a juncture where the line of vision is shortened for drivers who are traveling south on Fuller Avenue because of a rise in the slope of the street. This is a legitimate safety issue. Fuller Avenue is heavily traveled and the traffic flow is swift. Therefore, it will slow the flow of traffic that's using that exit on the west side of the building. Evidently, the the traffic safety engineers for the City of Grand Rapids must have been thinking that there would be an exit on, onto Sweet Street. I don't know, but I mean, we have, we have the potential for having 341 cars trying to get out of that parking lot if it's filled to capacity. So, we're really concerned about having this kind of traffic come through the residential area. Two of the most disturbing aspects of this whole scenario, you know, with the parking lot is the fact that the school representatives who are in charge of this plan, according to the Assistant City Planning Director, ignored their advice to notify neighbors of this plan for the parking lot. So, you know, I just, it concerns us so much that we feel that we are, you know, we're definitely a part of the community. We support millage increases, this sort of thing.
Your time is up if you can just.
My, my time is up. So, fast is three minutes. Okay. All right. Okay, well, let me just say that we met on the 16th with Mr. Johnson, Mr. Clumparents and one of the engineers involved in the construction of the parking lot. And we, at this point, feel that we want you to take another look at the plan to have cars exiting out of the east exit of that parking lot onto Sweet Street. So, I would really like to have you take another look at that and consider, and take, and see if there is if there is an alternative way that you can handle the traffic. The other thing is on our June 16th, at our June 16th meeting, we discussed a plan for dealing with the parking lot. We have one family's home that actually just faces that parking lot. They're very concerned. They look out every day and that's what they see. The undulating berms are 12 to 18 inches high and they don't provide enough screening, you know, to to really soften the effect of this parking lot, so.
I'm sorry, your.
Yeah, my time is up.
Thank you. We will check with Mr. Clumparents and.
Okay, yes, we, yes. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Superintendent's comments.
I would like to thank you, Dr. Baker, and members of the board for really pushing for the contracts for the employees. I am just really pleased that we were able to ratify contracts by the 1st of July. That's an important date. We've discussed this during our closed sessions, but it really meant a lot for all of the administrators that you guys were able to do that for our employees. And so, I just want to say thank you. And I know it was hard work, but I appreciate you sticking with it, pushing our thinking, and our employees, I'm sure, appreciate it as well. So, thank you for that.
All right, board member comments. Can I start with Dr. Felb?
Yeah, I just, I just want to back that up with thanking the negotiating team on both sides of the table for their efforts and I'm really, really pleased to see ratification of these contracts.
That's great.
Yeah, again, kudos. I think we certainly are for our employees and we want a good working environment for them as well as our children, so appreciate it.
Mr. Ross?
I guess I can just obviously second those comments. Also want to throw a little shot of a little love out to the Bailey family. Sid Bailey, former principal at a few places, mentor of mine and passed about a week and a half ago. Just want to acknowledge that.
No comment?
No comment.
No comment. Ms. Shatki?
Yeah, just delighted that we've come to agreement with contracts. I know much work has gone in prior to my appointment and I'm just proud to be a part now of moving forward and in a very positive way, so kudos to everyone involved. And happy Fourth. And if you're out on July 4th, I believe, Hollyhock Parade, right? You can see maybe a few of us out there, so come out and get some good candy and have a great Fourth.
Great. Yeah, I want to thank the team. I think that, you know, it's amazing. I can remember nearly all of the times that we've we've settled contracts and it's always been very emotional. And I know that whatever disputes there are, it's only because people are trying to balance fewer and fewer dollars and trying to do important work and it's been frustrating having to do that. But I'm really happy. I think that the teachers absolutely, the teachers and the custodians and all of the staff definitely deserve the support of us. And I think that I hope, I sincerely hope that they know that we wish, that we all wish that we could do more and that we're trying to get there. So, with that, we're adjourned.